You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Make a motion, will you approve the regular meeting minutes of June 7?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Motion been made and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 7. Any additions, additions? You're in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, will you approve the non-public meeting minutes of June 7?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the non-public meeting minutes of June 7. Any additions, additions? You're in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Anything else?
Yes, I had an intent to cut and two personnel action reports for summer ceaseful employees.
Okay, motion seconded to approve the consent agenda. And with the additions. Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public input.
Beverly, I'll make the motion regarding Gus Lorondo to the Southwest Regional Planning Commission?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve Gus Lorondo for the Southwest Regional Planning Commission. Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Considering new business. Update of tax maps.
So our long, multi-year tax map update is pretty much complete. The last step is the fun part, so let people know kind of the results. Again, it's only for taxation purposes, so we're not saying you don't own how much you thought you owned, but we might be telling people we're going to be taxing them on different acreage than they think they are. So we had a meeting a month or so ago now with CAI, which is the mapping company. And then last week had an update with Avatar, which is our assessing company, because obviously everything's going to need to be changed and updated in there. So I wanted to make sure we could make that change between tax billings like we are now. And they said we could. So I think the goal should be to try to decide on a outreach option ASAP and then get everything entered in so that the new acreages are and the new mapping lots are reflected on the second tax billing. From their experience, CAI has kind of proposed a few different options or seen towns go through a few different options, which they outlined. The most aggressive and possibly both in terms of dollars for the mailing and also staff time would be a direct mailing to every property with their kind of old info versus new info. That's the best way to make sure as many people as possible know about it. Probably would get us the largest turnout if we wanted to have public meetings kind of similar to what we do when we do a rebound. We have the assessors come in, not a few days, you know, not a weekday, weekend, where people can come in and discuss their assessment changes. This is a little bit different, but kind of along that same idea. Would have CAI come out and be available to have discussions with people. Basically, the discussion is similar to what I think we could have. So while it does put a little bit more on staff, I just hate to see them come down from various parts of the state to potentially sit in a room and just tell people unless you have new documentation, they reviewed all surveys and the town's possessions. So basically, unless someone has a survey, we don't know about. Probably not a lot we can do. Deeds are kind of the next best thing. If you don't have a survey, rely on the deeds. So the option one would be the correct mailing and then have CAI in for some set amount of days. The mailing, because we can't do a bulk mailing, so it would have to be print, you know, 3,500-ish letters, stuff them and then mail them posted, probably $3,000 to $5,000 plus then CAI time. I'll say the kind of CAI passive option, as I outlined it here, is just kind of do, put it on the website, put it on Facebook, put it on our bulletin boards with the new versatile info that people can go in and look up either based on owner name, address, old mapping lot, new mapping lot. I think that would be, would get some of the word out there, but it would kind of drag out people discovering it. A lot of people would probably discover it when they got their new tax bill or maybe next time they go to do a building permit or come into town hall, they didn't notice. Kind of the custom option that I'm proposing, which I think is the one I think is probably the best value, is to do kind of the general postings, but then also through like a QR code like we did with the survey. You know, it doesn't work for everyone, but I think we'll reach a good number of people. Just tell people in Swansea uncovered, you know, scan your phone here, see. They'd have to look up again their own property. But I think that that kind of would get the word out there more than just the postings, but with a lower kind of effort level than the direct mailing to everyone. So if we were to go that option, we'd like to decide that soon because we are kind of in final stages of wrapping up Swansea uncovered. So I know it's kind of a lot of, lot of, lot, throwing a lot at you. Kind of been mulling it around, kind of going back and forth really over the last month. I don't know that anyone's perfect, but I think that's kind of our best option.
You said they're going to get new mapping lots too.
Correct. Yeah, that's every property because they're starting like, the numbers are either starting with 100 or 200, depending on the scale.
How about my parents report or anything? Say how many changes were made? Can they do anything like that?
Maybe a question.
Five percent of our properties that issue.
I think a lot of them, probably the most, I don't want to say all, but I think most of them will see some adjustment, but it might be like, they thought they had three acres, now they have 3.03 or something because everything's a little more precise, but I can see if they have something like that.
And then if it do even like a front file by any orders, you know, over a certain, something like that.
Yeah, that's the other thing, kind of along that line bandied about, but we didn't know where to draw the line as well. Maybe send a direct letter to the ones that are, you know, significant, but kind of how do you define that? I hate to think that we're picking and choosing if it's what's significant or looks significant to us or insignificant to us might be significant to someone else too. One last hurdle to get over. And it's kind of in my, as I was thinking about this, to me, it's kind of like when we went through the street name changes. I feel like we have to kind of, it's a really, it's limited flexibility to make adjustments. So we kind of have to go, this is kind of short of having a survey we don't know about. Really have to, I think, stand kind of strong on this one because kind of if you tweak it for someone, it's going to, it's, we have, exactly. We have finite maps now thanks to the flyover and everything. So it's going to, one change like that could impact everything or a lot of other properties. It's got to come, any change has to come from someone.
What, what did they give you as potential pitfalls? What are the types of issues to arise? How many do they anticipate?
Well, in terms of pitfalls, they recommended not just posting the new maps without a lot of explanation because they're concerned that people aren't going to necessarily know how to look at them. They are set up differently. The other pitfall they said is basically don't, don't pick an option that they don't like, get everyone mad and then try to get them to come and, you know, mop it up after them. So those were some of the kind of process pitfalls.
So what kind of issues come up? Because like three acres or 3.1 isn't going to affect anything.
Right.
The current use.
The current used one.
But that's right, yeah. Once you get to 10, but if it goes down, it could affect subdivision. And then as Sly mentioned, once you get to 10, so if somebody, if somebody thinks they have 11 acres and this shows that they don't have 11 acres, do they lose the current use?
They could definitely, if we catch it based on this, they would no longer qualify based on our.
Exactly, a lot with one acre for the most. Do we know how many of those are in play?
I don't.
Is there a way we can find out?
It might be on something like, like the occurrence from Martha's, I mentioned. We've always seen the maps, we haven't seen any of the other ones like that. We've seen old versus new, but we kind of have to just go through.
In your administrator meetings, have you discussed it? What about the towns that have gone through it to get a sense from them as to what worked and didn't work?
I didn't discuss it with them, but these are from some of the same, some of the same communities than folks that I know. Those are some of the options he outlined or ones that they had taken. I think Panover had done the kind of passive option and I'm trying to remember which town he said didn't mean aggressive option. So through 10, yes, but I don't think any of the folks that I meet with regularly were ones that have gone through it recently.
Did you get a chance to talk to Elizabeth to see how, to learn how Keen did it? Because they're seem to be relatively seamless.
I did not.
In terms of what, when they went through it.
When did their, when was their student?
Probably been three or four years. I think it was, you might have, I don't, I know they did the land development code roughly at the same time. Hinsdale was the first one.
And we could potentially be, I'll say, overthinking it. Maybe, maybe it will be more seamless than we're thinking. It's trying to think of everything possible, just simple falls, so.
I think we'd like to have that sooner rather than a tax time.
Right. Or, and I know the big thing they recommend not doing, which is why we timed it when we did, not doing it during a rebound year. So that acreages and values and mapping lots are all changing at the same time. So that's why it's important to get it done this year.
And what was the difference between 100 and 200?
Based on the scale, scale of the map. So like where on Wilson Pond would be like a 200 because it's scaling differently.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know the custom option.
Check with Elizabeth, see if she has any other magic insights, but otherwise, custom option work, okay?
You're the one going to be dealt with, custom option, it may go work.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. First quarter financial analysis.
Nothing of, nothing of major concern. I worked with Julius on that, so I think I gave you a good job heading on the major items, but through the first quarter, not, nothing too major.
Ambulance service update.
So I received some responses from Mr. Coats on Monday and then additional stuff on Tuesday. So I guess we have, we have what we asked for, at least in terms of info. I made a concern, especially when I looked at what they're, what they're charging between the list of the towns. What I've come to on my little spreadsheet. 133,000 cover their $5 million EMS budget. I don't know.
It's just a standby.
Right.
They're still playing a 40% of their work being transports that are, they are getting faced with.
Right. Transfer, yeah.
So they're making some money in that. Soft for the better.
Hopefully, that's the, that's the hope. Just I've been trying to keep, I haven't necessarily kept in touch with every other town, but Marlborough was circulating a letter. Basically, the key in the county asking them to resolve their differences so that Keen will serve as the backup for the county versus using Greatbrook. So I don't know if that's anything interested in participating or staying out of. And the other piece was that Rescue Inc. told Marlborough that they're expecting to send out contracts and proposals on Friday this week.
Rescue Inc. is?
Correct. So I think, you know, they gave us kind of the general idea that per capita rates, but specific language and proposals.
Do you know if they updated our population number?
I did not. I haven't had any contact with them, it's just the EMS. But I did not, assuming it was what we think our population is, 7,400. I think it came up 368. Yeah, 368. So Erica, 42. I don't know, it's just a big difference. I was thinking, what if this was like an auditing bid and someone bid 2,000 and someone bid 20,000? I'm nervous about both of them, I guess is how I kind of feel, but I don't know what's going to happen. It's at 46 or 368, big difference.
So if we were, if we chose not to go with Rescue Inc., would they still have the ability to service other towns? Or were they serious with the all or nothing?
I think they would just have to subtract our population out of the per capita and I, so I think it would just increase the possible fees for everyone else to where it would be even more cost prohibitive. And they might not even be willing. I don't know, I heard the same, I heard the same thoughts from who they said to you. So I don't know many, I don't know, I don't have any additional information beyond that. I think it would be hard for them to set up base of operations with just the small towns.
And we're roughly, either way, we're roughly half the supplement or whatever the term is to cover their budget.
Yeah, standby.
So if we go away, the rest of them will pick it up.
Right.
So with the Keen, Cheshire, if Keen won't back up Cheshire and Cheshire doesn't back up Keen, who's going to end up backing up Keen?
I don't know if Rescue Inc. will continue to, I don't know.
Do they currently?
They are.
Because of right now with the Delusio thing. And what's Greatbrook?
That's the organization that was at the meeting also. They're based out of, I don't know where they're based, I think they're based out of Pembrokeshire, but I think they said at the meeting that they had a facility in Hillsborough. So I think they made, from what I've been told, they mainly do transfers.
They've been doing a lot of transfer if possible over the last couple of years. So what's our EMS director have to say? What is his input?
Oh, me? Well, kind of might go looking to the, you know, we're about to back up, so, you know, and that has to be worked out. I mean, I know that the vast difference in costs is maybe. I mean, I like the way we're operating, we're rescuing it this time. That's working out, the operation. But I like the rescue any model because we have Keen as the backup. If we go county and there's nobody backing us up, then we have to go back. We have to go out and find somebody to back us up. And you say Greatbrook, but I don't, I don't know exactly where they're coming from, so. Yeah, there's a couple of variables there. So far, Rescue Inc. has worked out really well.
And the price is right currently?
Um, can't beat the price right now. But they're like, you know, I guess it's not doing too great for them. It's not going to last forever.
Well, do we have the 150,000 roughly that it would cost to go on with them as of July 1? Actually, it'd be more than 150 if it was July 1, but August 1?
I mean, we could probably make it work, we'd have to run from somewhere. I think we have like 60 in the ambulance line item, so not, not there only.
If I'm not mistaken, there's that email that came from the treasurer was for the town of Gilson, so if she was anticipating, or pertained to the town of Gilson. So if they're anticipating Gilson going with the county, and I heard that Richmond, Westland are with the county, then can Rescue Inc. even do it? Because they indicated, I thought, all or nothing.
Yeah, the way I understand, I mean, basically Swansea is kind of the, the ledge panel, so, you know, Swansea doesn't, they'll probably pull out if we don't hold it down. As you, like you said, there's only a couple of towns that they, they won't be able to sustain that. It wouldn't be worth it for Rescue to stay in for that. But, you know, Swansea is, would make it work wise.
So the Richmond town administrator told me this morning, the board has not decided yet. They had questions for Chris Coats, questions for Chris Coats at Cheshire EMS. I just forwarded him his answers to help me. I can give you an update when I hear back and how to curious to answer Swansea decided. So they might have gone with them for the interim. Doesn't sound like they signed a contract yet. Same with Stoddard, I believe. So we have a budget of 60,000 in the ambulance and we had spent 10.5 in the first quarter and then we had to make a payment to the IRS for an additional month. That would have gone to Delusio, so we have about 48, 45 in that line item. So we'd have to work it somewhere else.
The county, it was, it brought any fourth year projections at all?
Correct. I think if we went with them, we'd want to start a expendable trust or something to start putting some money away.
Either one way or another, we're going to get to 400. Just might be delayed a little.
Sounds like Ken's looking forward to that in four years.
I'll tell you, I'm not envious.
So what do you suggest that we do?
I'm, I prefer to go Rescue Inc. at this point in time. Think more of a sustainable model, you know, and they're willing to come over to this part, so.
Where are they going to be based?
Well, it all, it all hinges on, on what the contract, so, you know, they didn't purchase property yet, but they would be based somewhere Keen, I would imagine, or it could be in this town. But they would be looking for property if they got, you know, if they were able to get signs and to, you know, they're really going to be operating. So they, you know, they, they seen over Marlborough Street now, they have, they brought their training center over there, so. I think that even if they pull out operational status with the ambulances, I'm pretty sure they're going to maintain that. Ben, Benson Training, might seem like a training. But yeah, so they would be looking for a property. They won't stay, they'll be based out of King Fire Station till, till they kick them out. Yeah, they have an agreement with them, they can be here for, for the time being. So I've also talked to them about possibly posting here in town, possibly in Engine 1 or Station 1. And, you know, obviously it's unmanned here in the day and they'd be able to, be able to post up there and have the little office facility, bathroom facilities, you know. They're pretty busy, so they're going to be out most of the time. Well, that would make sense if they were here in town, they were over, you know, in East Swansea, they could cover East Swansea, East Swansea, North Swansea, one on this side of town, so. You could have coverage here, they'll come over and meet us here and if they get a call on that side, we go in and meet them. And that would protect the town a bit better too. So. I'm not sure if that would affect our rate at all, you know. It could. Those discussions haven't really come to any, anything conclusive or something to make it off.
So what, what's the argument that we would use to support the additional 280,000 that we would be paying Rescue Inc. as compared to the county?
Yeah, when you just look at the numbers, it's hard. It's hard, I mean, I look at the, the model, the service model and the services variable.
What does that mean, the service model?
The way they operate, the way they have their coverage, the way they can come and cover our town.
How is it different from the county?
Well, right now, it's not all that different because the county doesn't have any, that many services or that many contracts. They're, they're available if they're not doing transfers. So, I mean, when you just take the numbers, I don't know, I don't know how you are.
But I guess what we're trying to ask is pretend the numbers were the same. When you said the service model and the coverage, how do you see it as? How do you, how are you weighing them as different? Especially where we don't have a proposal for Rescue Inc. yet. And I'm not trying, I'm just, I'm trying.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, I think Rescue is just to provide better service, I think, I don't know. I mean, you could, you know, not knocking anyone at the county, is again, but that unique situation is, you know, they're here in town. So it's, you know, you know, that's as far as the geographics go. There was some discretion or discrepancy about having an ambulance dedicated here for Swansea through the county, but.
Yeah, we were told that twice and then Mr. Coats said that was not accurate.
Yes, and then they, they kind of, it's not possible, so. So they can, you know, they can be, they can be tied up, be, you know, obviously be based here in town with the other places.
Two or three are on transfers and a couple 911s coming in from Stoddard and Gilson.
Richmond or wherever they're going, yeah, sure. And then, you know, then who would be the backup? Greatbook, right? On paper, so again, I don't know where they would be coming out. Again, Rescue, their backup is Keen Fire, which I would prefer that's the backup. So they've been in town here in certain few situations already. And that's obviously a higher level service for fire and EMS. So that will come back to our backups. I don't know if there'll be, if another service isn't, if Greatbrook doesn't, then the backup of the county. I don't know what other service would, or if that goes. Those, that situation is being worked out. Sure, I don't have any information on that. But it's, you can't beat their resources, they have, they have endless resources, Rescue.
There's just so many variables. Somewhere I read that the county was going to have two for transport and two for on-call and I heard them say a fifth, third unit, three for on-call. And Rescue Inc. is going to have two for on-call. So that may resolve itself. I think backup, we clearly know that at least today, Rescue Inc. and Keen would work collaboratively. But if some of the towns are going to go with the county, that may be the default position anyway if Rescue Inc. indicated that, that they had to have everybody. And of course, if some of the towns go, that just takes our cost up as well, so. But if Rescue Inc. isn't here, if Swansea doesn't go, then, then Keen, if Swansea doesn't go with Rescue Inc. and Rescue Inc. doesn't come to the county, then that means Keen's without a backup unless they're working with Greatbrook and the county's without a backup unless they're working with Greatbrook. So we're, we're going to be in the same position for backup.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, if Rescue pulls out tomorrow, goes back to, I'm not, I'm not sure who the backup for Keen, Keen is or who will be. I'm sure those things could be worked out, but I'm not, you know, I don't have that information, so.
Well, Keen and Delusio didn't play well together until when?
Till they did.
Till they did, yeah. They both realized there was a mutual benefit. I think we just have to see the proposals. And, but on, on paper, not knowing what you know, just, just on paper, it seems like the county is where we need to go. I think it's very hard to justify that additional expenditure when basically it's almost apples to apples. If, if they both, if the county, if the county has two vehicles, then they both have two vehicles. If the county has three, then the county has three and they have two, unless they change the model and they have three. So it seems like it would, the, the big difference would be the, the backup service that until the county and Keen come, come to. That until the county and Keane come, come together, then they're not gonna back each other up. But that still seems like a pretty hefty price to pay.
It'll be over the course of the next three years, a little part of the implications. It's just the standby fee, it's not, you know, maybe they're gonna see that they don't need quite that much.
Who?
Rescue, Rescue Inc.
It's a dilemma, isn't it?
It's a dilemma. Should we wait till we get the actual proposal from Rescue next week, if it comes next week?
Supposedly Friday, according to what they told.
This Friday, we can make a decision once there. Yeah, based on that.
Another good bill, give you more time to review them too, sitting with.
Yeah, and I think, I think, and Michael can speak to this, you know, I think better than I can, as most things, but I think people are waiting to see what, what we're gonna do, so. As I, it, it really hinges on what we're gonna, what Swansea does, so, kind of the big fish here. So that's why everybody's always anxious, like, asking us, you know, what the, uh, what the things are being discussed, but like I say, unless you have the paper and the polls in front of you, it's hard to.
Is it worth inviting the other towns again for more of like a roundtable discussion versus the presentation style, but just maybe they have insights about the level of service? That, you know, maybe they, maybe they can describe it in a way that makes sense, or maybe they, again, asked that question to Keane, okay, so if everyone goes with county, who's gonna be your back, you're really gonna, you're really going to refuse to back each other up, is that? To kind of get some of these items flushed out a little bit.
That would just get the towns and the, the administrators, that I would be bringing them back in soon.
Seems like to your point.
Services, I think, the services that made their pitch.
Right.
Maybe, maybe time to the counties just to hash it out.
Cause I think once start, once one or two kind of drop, we all lose our, whatever negotiating position we have, and then it's like, oh, we'd like to change this in the contract, and they could say, no, we're just gonna leave it, and what's your choice, if everyone, if a few starts to drop and we don't have a choice? I think we lose a lot of our, you know, negotiating position.
I think if we focus the discussion on things like that, as opposed to what's gonna happen in three or four years, I think it would be productive. But if there's a desire to, to continue to discuss why the county is at X and why they aren't at Y, right, to me, it's immaterial. That this is their proposal, they're gonna carry it for three years, that's the proposal, I don't care what happens in four years. We, obviously we do, but, but realistically, we only have today to wo- work with, so if we would need to have a strong ability to move beyond that wanting discussion, cause it's just not material, and if, and if there's a.
And there's no answers.
There is no answer, and, and why debate it, but if it's, if it's looking at things in the contracts that, that you guys have picked out, or between you and Cordell, that could be hashed out in that meeting, I, I certainly think it would be beneficial, but you're right, once, once they start, once the dominoes start to go, the leverage changes. But it also puts us in a better position, because if Rescue Inc wants to stay here, then they're gonna have to make it pretty attractive to us to stay. So anyway, I'd be in favor of, but as, as long as it was a, a focus.
Anything else, okay or not?
Yeah.
Next Wednesday night, and I have emails and stuff from the people now, so I don't think we need quite as long to schedule it out, I don't think any of the other boards meet on Wednesdays.
Well, you all feel like with Cordell, you could be prepared, if it doesn't come until Friday, and arguably, you're not looking at it until Monday?
Um, yeah, I think so, I mean, yeah, I would say.
Rescue Inc's contract, though, is gonna probably be the same as what they offer all the Vermont towns. I think that's part of their town meeting style, everybody gets the same deal, that's why Brattleboro made a lot of them. Because Brattleboro by population got a, a healthy increase. Not as healthy as ours, but, uh, you know, I think it is what it is, and I think those other contracts, from what I saw, that you had sent, they're all the same.
Yep. Just the names changed and the numbers.
You all are the head of the show, so.
What do you think, we're getting the towns back together?
What, as far as the meeting goes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. I think, I think people left that night anticipating you're gonna have another one.
I think we were also, at least I'll speak for myself, blown away by the disparity in the numbers, it seemed like a no-brainer. Until, you know, you kind of, A, thought about it a little bit more, and B, kind of got answers to some of these questions, and so I think, but I think there is merit to trying to, even if it's just to let everyone know which direction we think we're gonna go, and does, is anyone thinking something that we're not thinking, so.
Yeah, I, I definitely, don't think it would hurt to kind of network a little bit, or discuss a lot, yeah. Yeah, cause there was a lot of interesting things that came out of that meeting too, from, from the other towns, different questions and stuff, you know, which was pretty, pretty interesting, I thought.
So, kind of after, as part of our, we got the concerts, the public hearing, I think that would be pretty, pretty quick for the bands and the bowls, so, you know, shoot for get to that six fifteen or so, like that, after the public hearing.
Do the people really need to say for, for regular business, for?
Them saying we do the regular business and then do the the roundtable.
That was quick, you had people that were here early last time.
And you don't wanna say come in, it's gonna be.
Very, very quiet, so what are you thinking?
Maybe do a five o'clock, and have a public hearing at six.
My concern is A.
Some of those people will be working.
Working and traveling. And then, yeah.
Well, we're having this meeting, do we have to have a regular meeting next Wednesday?
Just if you want to fork out, fork out the public hearing on the concert, that was, that was the only thing.
We could still do the public hearing right at six, because like you said, there's not gonna be any of that.
Right.
Hopefully, and then we go right into that.
Okay.
So.
Yep, that works for me.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, Michael?
Basically, we'll just do the public hearing for the concerts at six, which we don't expect to take more than, you know, a couple minutes, and then just move into the discussion.
Okay, done.
Yeah, serious.
What's that? Said it now?
You know my feeling.
I do. Think it would have been crowded down here last time, but.
Oh, my God, yeah. I think so.
Make sure the AC's working this time.
Yeah.
It's not hot no more, that was the last time it was hot, it may.
I know, it's been cool, so.
Alright, so we have just a regular uh, just sign papers and all that, and they have the public hearing, then go to the six fifteen, so.
Great. Why do we need to have the public hearing at six?
Cause that's when we've noticed it for.
Oh, we've already, okay.
Yeah, that's the thing, I think fourteen days notice.
So we'll just come in at six? Seven, five thirty?
That should work, we'll let you know if anything else, oh, Cody Morrison from MEDC was gonna come in too, so we'll stick with five thirty.
Unless we put it on fifteen minute.
Five forty-five? Typical, he just wants to tell you about his brown field screen.
Yeah.
All right, so five forty-five?
No, about things.
I never know when you're messing with him.
Cause we'll leave. Commit soon with all the people coming, then we'll recess and. Okay, so we're sitting here at three thirty.
Keane too, or just the Delusio primary town, so now I'm sitting in the public meeting, anyone's.
Keane doesn't.
To discuss the backup issue, maybe, okay, that's what I thought. Very good, that's a good approach.
Alright. Non-public?
Sounds good.
A, B, C, D.
B.
Make a motion to go into non-public under B.
Second.
Motion made second.
Colby.
Aye.
Hot Walker. Karazenski.
Aye.